Here. This time, I'd like to invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion in a second for the Charrington 50th Anniversary Resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, at this time, I guess we should vote. Okay.
Are you reading it?
Yeah, I'm going up there to read it.
You want to go and vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Mastabaker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Velardo.
Thank you, President Cotter. It's always a joy when we get to honor and recognize outstanding service and work throughout the district. And tonight, we have a special recognition of the Charrington Elementary community. I am going to go to the podium. I would ask the board, Dr. Kellogg, to join us up front for this resolution, and then we will come forward and recognize -- oh, yes, sorry. And Treasurer Marshall. I forgot to mention her name. This is a recognition of Charrington Elementary, as I said, their 50th birthday. And at this point, I would like to have Principal Andrew Heck come forward, please, and I will read the resolution. And I think, Andy, you have a contingent here, right?
I do.
A cheering section. Well, why don't we -- the cheering section, why don't you at least stand where you are? So we can recognize all these good folks from Charrington have come to celebrate with us. Let me read the resolution. Resolution of Commendation for Charrington Elementary School. Whereas passage of a 1966 bond issue allowed for the construction of Charrington Road School, which was named after Ernst Charrington, a prominent leader in the Anti-Sloane League in Westerville. And whereas while digging the foundation on the 2.10.2 acre site for the new building, numerous arrowheads were found, leading to the belief that the first people who occupied that location were Native Americans from the Miami or Shawnee Tribe. And whereas, when the new facility was dedicated on September 29, 1968, Superintendent Harold C. McDermott, Principal Arthur Wright, and Westerville Board of Education President Horace W. Troop Jr. delivered remarks, while Zora Yowman, a secretary with 34 years of service in the district, cut the ribbon. And whereas, in its inaugural year, Charrington housed 11 classrooms for students in grades kindergarten through six, and enrollment was 436, with an average class size of 33. And whereas, throughout the years, while Charrington has undergone additions, renovations, growth, and even a name change, the real story is found in the students, the staff, and the parents, who brought it to life and transformed it into an exemplary, award-winning elementary school. Therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education, Superintendent John Kellogg congratulate Principal Andrew Heck and the Charrington Elementary School on 50 years of excellence in education this day, September 10, 2018. Give them a nice hand.
I think it would be nice if the Charrington staff came forward -- well, since I'm saying
it, and it's already recorded, you have to come forward and shake their hands. Don't you think they ought to shake hands?
We just want to invite anybody to our 50th birthday party on Friday. We're doing Mindful and so many other activities, so.
That's awesome.
And before we give them one more hand, the birthday party is on Friday -- this Friday, what time?
6:00 to 7:30.
6:00 to 7:30 at Charrington. The weather's going to be great, and, wait for it, they are going to have cake. So I will be attending, even if none of you attend. Give them one more round of applause. Well done.
So Nancy, based on our conversation as you were sitting down, I will make mention real quick, Nancy brought it to my attention, the name Horace Troop Jr. I think it's real important, and we always acknowledge the history of this community, relative not just to Westerville in total, but the school systems. If you know anything about Westerville history, the Troop name is legendary, although it's one that we don't hear very often anymore. Judge Troop, also a key citizen early on in all of the activities with the Anti-Sloane League and everything that was going on. Horace Troop Jr. Martha Troop Miles is actually the former owner of the home that I live in, and actually, Judge Troop lived on the same street that you live on.
A judge.
And their community activism over the course of the history of the first, you know, 50 to 70 years of the 20th century were really big contributions to the city of Westerville, and our school district. So it's worth mentioning that as well.
Agenda item 4.01 is the minutes for the meeting held on Monday, August 27, 2018. We don't normally vote on our minutes, but are there any comments or questions from the board on that group of minutes? Yeah? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Summer School Report. Dr. Ebrick.
Thank you, President Cotter, Treasurer Marshall, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. I come to before you twice a year, one to report on what we did over the summer, and then I'll be back again later on and talk about what we're going to do for 2019. But tonight, we're focusing and celebrating the success of summer 2018. So we'll go ahead and jump right into this. So for those of you that are not aware, we have our summer school programming opportunities for high school, where we offer credit recovery, credit advancement. We provide middle school intervention, as well as elementary for our K-3, as well as our 4-5 program. And then we also provide an almost kindergarten program for just those students that have never actually engaged in any kind of schoolwork, in an effort to help give them an experience before they get there on the first day of school. And so I'm actually going to cover all of these with you and what we did. So we had three areas of focus. That came as a result of my report to you, and we had some great discussions, and also what you wanted to see in our program for the 2018 year. And one of the things that you wanted us to do was increase the middle school enrollment. And we felt it important to go strong or go home, so we said we wanted to increase it by at least 20%, which is a pretty significant amount. And I'll share -- because I'm sharing the number is probably why you know I beat it, right? But anyway, yeah, it was at least 20%. I still would have put it up there had we gotten under it. Not really. Okay. So anyway, so we also wanted to enhance student engagement using virtual reality to support our online digital content. As you know, we provide -- all of our high school programming is using digital content. And sometimes there's opportunities there that our students don't always have, for example, in a chemistry lab. And we wanted to figure out a way in which we could provide that opportunity to our students, so we'll share that and what we did around that. And then also, we wanted to provide targeted relentless instruction. And I use that word relentless, because when you're trying to -- if you're a student and you're a family, and you've yet to pass the third grade reading guarantee to go on to fourth grade, we take it very seriously in our community and in our school to provide all kinds of support to get those kids over the hump, to get them on to fourth grade. So we'll talk about that. And then we also wanted to engage existing and also inform some new community partners, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So our first was our community partner, Neighborhood Bridges. And Neighborhood Bridges continues to do some wonderful things. Rick Bannister was going to be here this evening. He heads up Neighborhood Bridges. And he actually is in Hilliard tonight, developing Hilliard Bridges. So he wasn't able to be with us, but, you know, they provided $1,805 in scholarships for our students. And while we never want barrier, you know, money financially to be a barrier for our families, we always try to figure out ways in which we could get all kids to be able to participate if they're wanting to do so. And so we provide scholarships, you know, families do provide some dollars in. There's no such thing as 100% scholarship, but families do provide some. And then we also support that through these scholarships through bridges. So we actually provided 11 students scholarships at the high school level, and 15 in grades K through 8. So we celebrate all that Neighborhood Bridges does for us in our community during the summer, but also during the school years, for example, providing a little bit of different kinds of items for our school and our high school, for example, throughout the entire year. So there's this many, many ways, not just financial, that Neighborhood Bridges is stepping up to support us. Our high school summer school, we ended up, you'll recall, we used to have $400 per credit across the board for both credit recovery and credit advancement. However, we chose two years ago for credit recovery to charge $200. And that did provide a great deal of ability for our students to participate, and it increased our enrollment, which I'll show you here shortly. Want to talk about how we use technology. I've asked Mr. Rovatar, who is our science teacher, also helped us support a little bit as an administrative team. Mr. Nickel got promoted to assistant principal. He had to do some stuff over the summer, so Steve helped step in. So Steve is going to share with you this and kind of walk you through what you're seeing here.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Ebrick, back in the spring, he had asked me to take this on. He said, "Steve, I want you to buy an expensive virtual reality system and figure out how we might use it for our school." And so that's pretty exciting.
I will say, for the community, it was cost-effective-expensive.
Cost-effective-expensive. You, you know, essentially have to put a decent amount of money into a computer that's going to support this kind of a system. And what you see here is one of our summer school students, he was one of my chemistry students, and brilliant guy. He, you know, basically, we gave him the opportunity to try out -- it's kind of hard for you to see the picture there, but I guess it is running cool. What you're going to see off to the right will be -- you can see he's mixing up the chemicals virtually. And, you know, when you can hear this, you can hear the glass clinking, you're measuring the solutions, you're looking at graduated cylinders and beakers, and, you know, you have to essentially do everything you do in a regular chemistry lab. And what he's doing, he, of course, got everything the way he was supposed to, and it was pretty awesome. Nice work. So it was a neat way to safely have him do what you do in a chemistry lab. And, you know, it makes you put on your safety goggles before you can even progress, which is, of course, an important thing. And so now, I don't know if the other picture's up there. We also have -- we had a student that we trained up to basically learn how to use this program, so that the picture on the left there is our current lab assistant that we're using in the program right now. And we had her come in extra over the summer, and she learned how to use the system so that she would be prepared to learn how to, you know, teach our new students coming in in our EOS program. So she became one of our resident experts, knows all the games and the programs and things that we're using, so she can teach students. And essentially, we're providing a lab experience for science students and various other things that, you know, in a virtual scenario. So it's kind of a neat thing.
Thanks, Steve. I like the concept of traditionally, we've always provided, in the traditional schools, we provided credit flex opportunities for students to earn elective credit as a lab assistant. We have virtual lab assistants. And I think this is just kind of another opportunity for our kids. And she comes in half a day, three hours early to school, to serve in this capacity for our students. And she's getting elective credit as a result of that. So she's learning and also has the opportunity to use it herself. So it's just really cool. Next, I want to highlight our enrollment. So as you can see, before we instituted the lower price for our credit recovery students, we were around 200 students, 216. We were 267 this past year, excuse me, this past summer. And then you can see the number of students advancing credit, students in terms of our success rate, who earned credit advancement at 96%. Students that recovered credit, I'm pleased to say we're at 90%. And our overall students who are earning credit was 92. The previous year was 84. So we continue to get better at what we're doing. And I will say that I always concerned about the students that we leave behind that don't earn the credit. And there were 21 students that didn't earn the credit. The issue, though, was they can't earn the credit if they're not attending. And as you can see, I put on there that they missed 21 out of 30 days. And I would almost contend, if they earned credit, I'm not sure how much the fidelity we're administering our program with. But I will say that not one parent was not informed that their student wasn't attending, and they were very much aware, and that's a whole nother thing. But my point is, there were no surprises at the end of the year whether their students weren't going to pass, because we were in constant communication with these families. But if you want to pass the class, you've got to attend. So, and that's just one piece of data I wanted to share. Also, from a credit flex standpoint, you can see that we continue to encourage students that if our summer program isn't going to work for you, where else can you go, and what can we do to vet that curriculum to make sure it's transferable? And you can see there at the bottom, we had 129 two years ago in credit flex over the summer. In this past year, we had 199 students earn credit outside of the Westerville schools, but yet, at the same time, all of that curriculum where students are going is vetted by our curriculum specialists to ensure that it meets our standards. So we celebrate that, that we're providing a lot of opportunities. High school enrollment highlights. You can see that the year that we put in the opportunity for our students, for our PE waiver, and you can see that we've gone from 334 down to 35 students now. But still, students are coming that are wanting to choose that option. We've continued to increase the number of students in our Algebra I. We did see a decrease in Algebra II enrollment. We went from 61 the previous year to 31 this year. And part of the reason for that is we instituted a -- implemented an Algebra II Essentials class at the high school level, traditional face-to-face. And I believe that that resulted in us decreasing the number of students that needed to recover credit. So I think there was some benefit to that program, just as seen through that data right there. And then also, our geometry stayed the same. Our middle school intervention program, we focus on grades 6 through 8. Again, it's a four-week program, whereas the high school is a six-week program. Here's the number that we're most proud of. And I will always remember the board challenging us to figure out a way to get more middle school students involved. We increased our enrollment by 27%. So we beat it, exceeded it, and we celebrated that. We also decided that it was important for our middle school program to make sure that we're continuing to focus on social-emotional growth. And we have a measurement tool to ascertain that. And as you can see, 77% of our students actually indicated a positive increase in social-emotional growth through this instrument. We have the pre and the post assessment as a result. 8% remain the same. We had 15% indicated a slight change, slight to mild decline, and there was no student at all had a significant decline. So we celebrate that data, that we increased enrollment, and we increased the ability for them to feel comfortable where they were, and to grow socially, emotionally, as well as academically. So I'm going to ask Greg Mantenix, our Secretary Administrator, to come up and speak about our community partners and our career exploration program.
At the middle school? Yep. So this year, I was the administrator at the 4 through 8 program. I'd like to thank you and Superintendent Kellogg and Dr. Ebrick for affording us that opportunity. And what I think is, I was telling Mr. Velardo before the meeting, that I've been active with the summer intervention program for somewhere around between 13 and 14 years. And this was what I thought was by far our most successful year. And that had a lot to do with the teachers that were working there, and the program that we were able to implement, that we called it STEAM or iSTEAM program, kind of revamping, doing different things with intervention, with science, with technology, engineering, art, math. I think we changed one of the letters. Was it -- we added, we changed the E from engineering to English Language Arts, because we really did kind of have all the teachers integrate everything within that and work very closely with the art and the engineering teachers and do a lot of those things. We also had a number of community partners, so you can see the people who came in. And the biggest thing was, is that caused a reduction in the amount of discipline problems that we saw, even bus write-ups. Kids were engaged, there was an increase in attendance. And I think it was in speaking to the students, that's exactly it, is so many of these students came in thinking, "Well, this is just going to be, you know, me sitting through two hours of math." And I didn't even like 50 minutes of math. And now, they kind of had other opportunities, and they saw there are different things out there for me, and so maybe this whole education thing is worth it, because I see kind of the end game. Students particularly speaking to, they loved watching Matt Ryan come in, and a number of them were interested in kind of the DJ atmosphere and trying to be DJs or work into the entertainment industry themselves. And then a number of them who were interested in pursuing military careers and having a chance to speak with Sergeant Bove. And so those were great things that really kept the students engaged. And then, obviously, the teachers who worked hard every day to make lessons engaging and going through a number of activities. And while, like Dr. Ebrick was saying, is all of the teaching staff is so serious and takes this so seriously, but they also know, right, if we can make this enjoyable and engaging for these students, then they're going to know somebody cares about them. And hopefully, we'll continue that through the year and see that growth. I don't know if --
Would you introduce the three teachers here?
Okay. So, and I do want to give credit, Ashley Frounfelter is not here.
Yes, she is, actually.
Oh, look, oh, geez. Look, so she was one of the people, she was instrumental in scheduling a lot of these, a lot of these speakers, so thank you to her. So, I'm sorry, Ashley Frounfelter, Katie Worthlin, and Scott Delagati. They were remarkable. Ashley's been working with us for years. Katie and Scott were new additions that made a huge difference in the way things rolled in the middle school program. So a great thanks to them.
Very good. And actually, I actually got married in between our summer program and now, and she's, I think, Mrs. McFerrin, right?
No.
Okay. Congratulations. Well, we got to celebrate things when that happens, you know? All right. So I want to introduce to you Katie Worthlin. Come on up here. Katie's going to talk with you about our program. Dr. Kellogg was over to see some of this, so you'll see some familiar pictures here, Dr. Kellogg, but here you go. Katie?
Hi. Nice to see you all. Thank you for listening to what we were doing over the summer. So Scott Delagati and I were teaming up over the summer to do the engineering and arts aspect of this theme program. And what we did is we started over at the middle school and did a lot of our sketches, a lot of our ideas, and laying out what we're doing for the program. And then we started going over to the shop at Westerville North. And I must tell you, while the walk from the middle school to the high school was entertaining sometimes, it was wonderful to get them out of the building and into the shop at North. Over there, what we started doing is we introduced them to a drawing software program that was on the computers. And we had different themes, and they had to make some kind of logo, or design, or visual idea to express who they are individually as a person. And then we were also looking at who we are as a collective group, as middle school students. So students worked within those themes. And the first step was doing the design on the computer. So we went through the software, taught them how to do the different manipulations digitally. Then what we did is we took flat cardboard, and the designs that were created on the computer were then laser etched into the cardboard. And this was basically our preliminary sketches to make sure that they were going to transfer over to the pumpkins. So, do they know about?
Go ahead and explain why pumpkins.
So the reason we were doing --
People already know, at least, that they should remember. We won't test them whether they remember or not.
Good.
But share with you why we're doing pumpkins.
So, Westerville City and Parks and Rec was looking at doing a pumpkin glow for the city as an event in October. So we ended up getting a ton of funkens, fake foam pumpkins, that we began doing designs for that were going to be utilized for this event. So once they ended up having their cardboard design finished, we would go in and they were able to look at the cardboard and determine what tweaks they needed to do, what they needed to finish and fix, so that it would be rendered correctly on the pumpkin. And then through lots of finagling between Scott and I, we would figure out how to laser etch on a round item when the laser just goes flat. So we had that happen. And then if you look in step four, for some of them, they actually went in then and carved out the rest of the design so that a light could be put internally and that it could glow. And the other designs that were not carved out were going to be uplighted, so they would be light on the ground and uplight that so that you could see the designs. The students were incredibly engaged, and it got to the point where, towards the end of summer school, our eighth graders were asking to just come and stay in the shop, because they were so engaged in what we were doing. They were also very good at picking up their skills and then transferring that over to other students who were not garnering as much success in the progress of what they're doing. And so it was really interesting and inspiring to see these students who typically are not gung-ho about school and about education, coming in here, and not only are they so enthusiastic about learning themselves, but they're enthusiastic about teaching other students as well, and trying to help them learn and experience success throughout the progress.
Thank you, Katie. So you heard from an expert teacher who does a tremendous job, as well as Scott Delagati. And that program would not have been successful without all of our teachers. But keep in mind that Katie and Scott had never worked with any of these, with these mediums before, and nor the equipment. So they learned, just, you know, in between when school is over to when summer started, they put a lot of extra time and effort in, but you can see the result. And so we lift them up as exceptional teachers. Also, the pumpkin glow event, Randy Euler wanted to be here tonight, but he was unable to do a family commitment. But one of the things that through this process, the city of Westerville and the Parks and Recreation Department quickly discovered that this was a wonderful thing to plan and get going, but it was going to take a lot of time. So we've actually postponed this event until October of 2019. But what's beautiful is we have another summer now to replicate what we did and continue to do more for the city of Westerville and the Parks and Recreation Department. So the event is actually, the pumpkin glow, is going to be in October of 2019. And we're retaining the student names, because you'll recall, perhaps, that all students that were involved in this, their families, and the students are getting free tickets to this event. So we will be able to get this out to them. While I'm thinking about it, I want to make sure I also acknowledge Rhonda Hoffman, my administrative assistant who's here. She is the person behind the scenes that gets all these applications going and everything, so thank you, Rhonda, for that. Rick Bannister walked in as well. Rick, I shared that you were in Hilliard, kind of helping to replicate your program, so Rick joins us. Thank you, Rick. I lifted up Neighborhood Bridges and talked very highly of your program. Watch the tape, okay? And then I want to talk about the elementary summer intervention program. And Melissa Kropatsky is here as well, who oversees the summer program. And just real quick about that, we focus in on our students through STAR. We work on their English Language Arts, our math. This stat was very interesting, and it's not a typo. We had 414 students the year before, and we had exactly 414 students this year. It's not a typo. I don't know what happens if it's 414 next year. But we lift up, just like the 27% that we celebrated of an increase in enrollment for middle school, we celebrate an 83% success rate for our third grade program in reading. Getting 83% of our students, which are 10 out of 12 students, on to fourth grade, then continue to support those families, the remaining -- on to fourth grade, then continue to support those families, the remaining two, up until school started, to try to get them ready for fourth grade and be able to share what they could learn on the alternative placement exam. So, just so you know, over the summer, we did move 10 out of 12 into the fourth grade for that. We also demonstrated significant growth. You know, and when you have a four-week program, but yet you grow kids at an average of 3.5 months, that's significant. So, four weeks, we grew them in three and a half months. I'm thinking if we had them for, what, three months, they would be almost a year.
I don't, I don't want to, I just want, I just want people to look at that, those last numbers. I personally, I think it's "we," but I'll say "me," I personally am very impressed and pleased with that. Grade K, 1, 2, 3. That's just marvelous to all of you who were a part of this.
It takes a dedicated team.
It clearly does. And whether you get married or not, it just takes a dedicated team. And so, I'm sorry.
And then, the last point of data I wanted to share is our Almost Kindergarten Program. And, you know, we're always trying to get people involved in this program. I'm hoping that people that watch the program now remember this program into next summer. And so, you're going to be a little bit surprised that we only helped five students enroll. We constantly put this out there, we had five. But I equate it to the starfish, okay? You can walk down that ocean, and there's 100 starfish. But if you pick one up and you throw it back, you save that one. And I'll tell you what, we saved five students. What I mean by saved is these five students and their families, these students had never experienced school. So, when they walked into Anheuser Elementary for the first time, they don't know what school looks like. They don't know what, necessarily, they don't have that experience, that frame of mind, that reference. And so, these families really appreciated. And it was, it's a break-even proposition for us, but I think it's an exceptional opportunity for these five future stars in our school. You like that? All right, very good, all right. I'm an elementary principal, a little corny. Okay. So, the 2019 summer learning opportunities, we're going to continue to figure out, make sure we're identifying students, make sure there, how can we make sure that we get as many kids in as we can. We're going to continue to pilot innovative ways in which we can think about what that might look like for the, during the school year. And certainly, we're always going to try to do this within a specific budget, which Mr. Hersheiser appreciates. So, and Dr. Kellogg. So...
So does Ms. Marsh.
That is our program presentation for tonight. So, thoughts, questions?
Any questions from the board?
I don't have a question. And Rick, well, I think you summed it up very, very well. I am so pleased with the growth of this program. When I'm talking about growth, I'm not just talking about that incredible middle school percentage. I'm talking about what I often call the high-touch nature of the instruction that's provided to these young people and the social-emotional growth that is provided with these young people as well. So, I really, truly thank you for these intensive efforts with these young people. It enhances not only their lives and their academic futures and their social futures, but it enhances the life of the district as well. And what you've done this summer is so far beyond what most people believe summer school to be. It's exciting, it's enthralling in a lot of ways. Dang, I wish I could make one of those pumpkins. This sounds like so much fun. But what you've done is, in a lot of ways, rescued academic success for young people. And that is fantastic. Thank you for the work you've done on this.
Dr. Nancy Baker?
We do... What do you do to thank these community partners? Anything in particular? I mean, do you, just the folks that came in?
Well, one, we celebrate them at the board meeting. We acknowledge them publicly, and certainly, we continue to lift them up, and we'll reengage them, too.
Okay.
And keep in mind that, as you well know, that the number of, the people that do this, they do it from the heart, right?
Ashley, if...
One of the things that we taught...
Ashley, come on up here, so they can hear you in the mic here. Just what Ashley wanted to do.
When I reached out to our community volunteers to come in and spend some time with the kids, one of the things that I reiterated with the kids was, you know, these people are taking a day off work or off their schedule and potentially are going to have to work more hours so that they can come in and talk to you. And it was that important to them to be there. And so, one of the things that I taught the kids is when somebody does something nice for you, you need to write them a letter. So, that was part of the language arts piece, and we really worked on that, about thanking them and why we were thanking them, more importantly, not just "thanks for coming in," but, you know, did it spark a career interest in you? And that's one of the things that meant so much, is we saw kids' eyes light up, like, I have a path now. And especially when Columbus State came in and Stanley Black and Decker, there's multiple facets of jobs that they can get involved in. And just with technology and everything, they don't have to go to college to do some of those jobs. And it was kind of eye-opening for them to see that and to be excited about something. So, we were really fortunate for those community people that came in. So, thank you.
Well, thanks for pursuing them. And I guess, really, Dr. Ebrecht, it's just really a shout-out from the board and the staff here that, because we have a huge audience that watches this video, and...
Yeah.
We just want to get the word out.
You couldn't have scripted that question any better. But thank you for...
You're welcome.
Ashley, thank you, off-the-cuff response. Thank you.
So, Scott, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to your fabulous team here. We really appreciate all you do and going above and beyond. And thank you, Mr. Bannister, for supporting our students always in our community. We appreciate it.
And congratulations on the birth of your granddaughter.
Scott, the only thing I'd like to emphasize is, I really appreciate and am pleased with not just the performance, but the establishment of the metrics and the baselines and the expectations in the way that the program, all the leaders, did this year. That's a repeat that I want to see for next year, and I really, really appreciate, you know, putting goals out there that, at first blush, seemed like a big goal to reach for. The 20% was a big goal, and to hit 27% is exceptional. But I want to make sure that we continue that practice of challenging ourselves by not necessarily looking towards the performance numbers that come from the students' numbers, but the, from the students' attendance, but the goals and thresholds that we really want to see those, those kids reach for. And I really think that that will continue to drive this on the trajectory that we've got now.
I know that this is an annual presentation, and we will continue to be transparent and make sure those metrics are there. So, thank you.
I would also like to thank you. Obviously, the numbers are great. One of the things that I think is really different about this approach, too, is you're taking some risks to try and make the content more engaging for students. And I really appreciate that, whether it's bringing in some different people from the community to talk about careers or the pumpkin glow, the virtual chemistry, that's all very different and engaging. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5.02, Dr. Kellogg, Superintendent's Report.
This evening, we have a report from Scott Reeves, who's going to come forward in a moment, as we clear the runway. Thank you, folks from summer school. Mr. Bannister, outstanding work.
And Dr. Kellogg, as Mr. Reeves is making his way up, I unfortunately need to excuse myself. The board is familiar, my youngest daughter and I are making a trip tomorrow to drop her off at college, which is a typical fall thing, except we're going to be traveling 7,000 miles to do that. And we run into a bit of a travel problem that I just received a call from home base on. So, I'm going to need to excuse myself because we have to get that sorted out. So, thank you.
Same travels.
So, President Cotter, members of the board, as you know, sometimes, the normal course of planning doesn't align with opportunity. And so, you have to be flexible. And that's the case here this evening. So, Mr. Reeves is going to share with you and the community a program opportunity that came to us. And then, later on in the agenda, there's an opportunity for the board to consider funding for that opportunity. I know Dr. Nestor Baker's been part of the conversations and seen some of the presentations. So, there's information I think we left at your table as well, if you'd like that, for part of it. So, thank you for being flexible this evening and allow for this, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, President Cotter, members of the board. As you know, we do our budget allocations in the spring. But as Dr. Kellogg alluded to, we had an opportunity that we think would be very beneficial for some of our students in a program this summer that would cost us an investment that we were not able to budget for this spring. It's a program where some of our students, perhaps some of our more at-risk students in need of avenues to be able to graduate, can do so by earning industry-recognized credentials, one that would possibly earn them a high school diploma in lieu of passing the state test, give them an amazing experience, a leg up on a potential career, and works with some of the more challenging citizens with the developmental board. So, I've asked Janice Hall, if I could have Janice come. Janice Hall is a special projects manager from the Ohio Provider Resource Association. It's whose program with which we are looking to invest in for our children. And Janice can give you a little bit more expert explanation on the program that we are bringing before the board.
Thank you. As Scott said, my name is Janice Hall, and I work with the Ohio Provider Resource Association. OPERA is the largest statewide trade association for providers of services to people with developmental disabilities in the state of Ohio. We have over 180 members. So, in 2014, when our president, Mark Davis, attended Governor Kasich's State of the State address, Governor Kasich talked about creating alternative pathways to high school diploma. And in the meantime, providers of services to people with developmental disabilities have been finding it harder and harder to find, train, and retain qualified, competent staff. In fact, the field of direct support is the number-one job in demand in the state of Ohio, and it just keeps growing. So, we, a light bulb went off over Mr. Davis's head, and he said, "We've got to do something about this." And so, we wound up brainstorming and came up with a program called Community Connections Career Partnership Ohio. We affectionately call it C3PO. And what it is, is a program for students in their junior and senior years of high school to learn about the field of direct support to people with developmental disabilities. We paired up with the Ohio Alliance of Direct Support Professionals, who already had a national award-winning curriculum directed to people who currently work in the field. So, we took that curriculum and we split it up into a school year. And there are actually two credentials that students can earn. The first one is the Certificate of Initial Proficiency, and the second one is the Certificate of Advanced Proficiency. So, students in their junior year of high school will work towards the CIP. In their senior year, they'll work towards the CAP. And those credentials have been listed on the High Department of Education's List of Industry Credentials and will can earn them a high school diploma. We started in 2015, school, 2015, '16 school year at Franklin Heights High School in the Southwestern City School District with 12 students who were at risk of not graduating. We were more than surprised when all 12 of those students completed the year, received their credential, and then 10 of those 12 students came back in their senior year, completed the program, received their Certificate of Advanced Proficiency, and all of them graduated. I'd like to tell you a bit about the story of Kelsey. Kelsey was a student in that first program. She had been kicked out of three different schools. She was a freshman twice. Her second year as a freshman, she only attended school 37 days. She had a 0.01 grade point average. She entered this program as a junior. She, as I said, received her Certificate of Initial Proficiency, received her Certificate of Advanced Proficiency as a senior, graduated with a 3.89 grade point average. And then, she wound up entering the field of direct support. And she now has received a couple of promotions. She's more of a middle management person. Remember, she's 21 years old. And last fall, at OPERA's Fall Conference, we honored her with the highest award that we give to a direct support professional. So, I can tell you many, many stories about students like Kelsey who have been in the program. We're just starting our fourth year. We are at five different schools now. We're hoping that you will join us at Westerville. I just wanted to say thank you for, thank you in advance, for considering joining the program. It is a great partnership between public and private. Not only is the school system involved, the OPERA's involved, OADSP's involved. We will have local providers of services to people with developmental disabilities who will act as interns for the students. And it also has the support of the Delaware County Board of Developmental Disabilities. So, I'm, would be happy to take any questions. I know that was pretty brief. I'm not sure what kind of material you have in front of you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? I don't have any questions, but it sounds fabulous. Thank you.
You, you gave more acronyms.
That's the field of developmental disabilities.
I, that is, that is just crazy. That is crazy. And we thought it was Oprah. So, it's Oprah, Oprah. Oprah has given birth to C3PO. That's, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Under the auspices of the, of the CAP, CAP.
And CIP.
Yes, and the, yes, the CIP. I wrote them both down, yes. All joking aside, I, this is a bit of a, of a personal thing for me, because I have a, I have a brother who is confined due to MS. And I just happened to be with him yesterday, and it's the same story every time. The turnover in this field and the lack of qualifications or quality, et cetera. And I, Dr., Mr. Reeves, you know, shared some of this, and I, my colleague, Nancy, has shared some of this and been a part of it, and I know she's going to bring some more light to it. I, I just am very much in favor of this.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm grateful that ODE, that sometimes I don't have the great deal of confidence in, but I'm grateful that ODE is seeing some wisdom in this path for students to achieve a meaningful service in life. Because in the end, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, in the end, we're passionate about education. But I would say to you that I'm even more passionate about that at the end of the educational path, the student finds meaningful work and contributes something.
And once you get people with developmental disabilities into your heart, it doesn't leave.
Yeah.
Another thing that I'd just like to share real quickly with you is we're very, we were very honored that C3PO has earned the National Moving Mountains Award for its program and the work that we've done in Ohio. And we are talking more and more to other states. Just today, I received another email from the State Department in New York, asking us how we got started and how we were able to get the credentials recognized by ODE.
Just on, real quickly, on the practical side, I love that there's a, that there is a CIP and a CAP, that there is a sequential and an advancement and a deepening of the understanding of this line of work. So, it's, thank you for coming.
No, no. Thank you very much for being here, and I really appreciate the board's willingness to consider this. As Scott Reeves was saying, we did our allocations earlier in the year before we were aware of this. And we basically had two options. We could wait until next year, or we could ask the board to consider it for this year. We could wait until next year, or we could ask the board to consider it for this year. I didn't want to waste any more time. I wanted to make sure that we were providing sound, heart-filled pathways that lead to fulfilling lives for our kids as soon as we could do that. And I, as I say, I very much appreciate the board's willingness to consider it. This is a finely tuned partnership, the public-private partnership, between your organization, our local providers within the community, and our school district and our school district personnel. It requires that triangle to make this work well. And you have sufficient track record, and I was convinced by the information that you shared with the meeting that we were engaged in. There's enough behind it that tells me it can definitely succeed. And there is far more than enough interest and passion on the part of our educators to make it work. And I know there's passion within the providers within our community. So, I have very high hopes for this. We intend to focus initially on our EO's kids, our EO's students. They need this pathway, and the people who they will serve need them. So, I am looking forward to seeing how it plays out. This is, as you know, later in the agenda, this requests us to increase our appropriations by $22,000 this year. That is a remarkably small sum for the successes I believe we will achieve in the lives of these young people and in the lives of the individuals that they work with. So, thank you for being willing to work with Westerville. It will be an excellent partnership.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 6.01. Nobody has signed up for public comments for this particular item. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.01, Auditor of State Award with Distinction. Think that we should be getting this maybe? Would you like to talk about that, Ms. Marshall?
Yeah. Thank you, President Cotter, members of the board. So, we were actually supposed to have a representative from the Auditor of State's office here with us tonight to present a district with an award. It's the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. It's for a clean audit for fiscal year 2017. He couldn't make it tonight, so he'll probably schedule a time for him to come and take a picture with everybody out by the couch. But I did want to highlight the award anyway. It is a really big deal. This is the sixth year that this school district has received the award. So, I don't want us all to get immune to how exciting this is because it does take a lot of work of everyone in this school district, from the treasurer's office to the building secretaries. I mean, everyone. It shows that the district is good stewards of taxpayer dollars and that we're doing the right thing by our taxpayers and handling the finances and complying with all the regulations that are out there that we constantly have to deal with. Do you have a question?
Yes, I have a quick question. Is this something that is awarded frequently?
No. So, the -- out of all of the entities that the state of Ohio audits, which includes cities, townships, counties, villages, school districts, less than 5% actually receive this award every year. And that's why I want to say, I want to make sure that everybody realizes, even though this is the sixth year, it just shows how outstanding this school district has done with that. So, we will be receiving that award sometime soon. He just couldn't be here tonight to present it with us, but -- and we should have a press release going out about that
Okay.
Soon.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.02. Did you want to report on that, too?
Yeah. So, we have starting a new audit for fiscal year '18, and we have an audit committee that will convene at the conclusion of the -- this year's audit, which should be probably January timeframe. I've asked, in talking with the executive committee, I've asked for the same people that were on the audit committee last year. We have five individuals who are not district employees who serve on that committee. And three of them are able to serve one more year -- no, two of them are able to serve one more year, and then three of them are able to serve another two years. So, I've asked them all to come back again for this year, and they've all agreed. Those folks are Matthew Bartosik, Margaret Dune, Alfred Hammond, Keith Gaskins, and Eric Kyrie, I think is how you say that last name. So, they'll be joining us again for the audit committee this year. And we also have Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Hersheiser, myself, and President Cotter that serves on the audit committee from the district. Are there any questions about that? We're looking forward to another good audit. Fingers crossed. No, it'll be good. So, yeah. Yeah, no pressure at all. Six years in a row, right? Yeah. Yeah. So...
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.03. Is there a motion and a second for the resolution to increase the appropriations for the C-3PO item?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Would you like me to just mention? So, this is to increase the appropriations for the amount that Mr. Reeves -- to increase Mr. Reeves' budget for this program. So, it was something that wasn't budgeted for back in the spring. And then attached to this is also the agreement with OPERA for the program.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 8.01 through 8.09. Can I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Hopkins?
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board. Dr. Kellogg, it's my pleasure to present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights tonight include one retirement effective at the end of the year, Susan Zimmerman from McVeigh Elementary School. Always like to recognize them for their outstanding years of service, and we'll call her back with all the other retirements at the end of the year to formally recognize her. We also have 19 resignations, of which 13 come from classified positions and six come from the area of supplemental or pupil activity programs. We have one-time payments to cover staff participation in preparation for our recent Westerville Education Day, the employment of 17 individuals in various classified positions, one licensed teacher and two licensed replacement contracts, in addition to the employment and adjustment to a number of licensed supplemental contracts and classified pupil service programs. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Ms. Marshall, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 9.01, Old Business We Have None. Agenda Item 10.01, First Reading for the 2019, 2000 -- I mean, 2020 Academic Year Calendar. I believe we have Mr. V. Brands coming to speak about that.
Good evening, President Cotter, Vice President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. Before you this evening for a first reading is the 2019-2020 Academic Calendar. The district's calendar committee prepares this calendar annually, and the calendar is then brought to the district's executive leadership team for review. Any adjustments are made at that point before being brought to you for consideration. The final authority to approve the calendar is legally and exclusively that of the Board of Education. Our typical practice has been to have the academic calendar prepared and approved at least two school years in advance. But the 2019-20 calendar was actually put on hold last year in order to survey staff at the beginning of this year. There were a couple of things that we'll periodically reach out to staff to get some feedback on, and had a couple of unique things occurring with the calendar over the last couple of years. And the calendar committee thought it would be a good idea to reach back out to staff and say, "What's your preference?" Before I get to a little bit about what that was all about, I will let you know that the calendar before you exceeds the minimum number of school year hours required by the state and includes time to address calamity days or other unforeseen events that could impact the days that school is open. The calendar begins the school year for students during the third week of August, which is consistent with past calendars, and it continues the practice of not beginning the school year with a full five-day week for students. The first semester ends prior to winter break. And in this calendar, winter break actually consists of 16 calendar days for staff and 17 calendar days for students. And the school year does continue to end before the Memorial Day holiday. Winter break was one of the items that we evaluated on the survey. Many, many years, staff had said, "We'd really like to have a full two weeks at winter break," and we've just never been able to make it happen. For the current school year, staff actually have 13 calendar days. Students have 14 calendar days before returning to school. So, with the 2019-20 calendar, we were able to increase winter break by three calendar days for each staff and students. The calendar has spring break scheduled during the last full week of March, which is consistent with past calendars, and classes resume March 30th. The proposed calendar incorporates professional development days on August 9th and November 5th, and then four early release days, also for professional development activities on September 26th, October 17th, January 30th, and March 12th. Representatives from each employee association and other areas of operations such as transportation, testing, communications, and also a representative from parent council are given the opportunity to participate on the calendar committee each year. So, with that, tonight's first reading begins the 30-day window of opportunity for public feedback on the calendar before we ask for the second reading and approval, and that will happen the second meeting in October.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, Mr. V. Brands. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.01. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve our overnight out-of-state field trips?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.02, CDE waiver. Can I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Reeves?
Thank you, President Cotter. As you recall, we've done this a couple of years in a row now. As a requirement by the state, if you do not offer state-approved career technical programming at the seventh or eighth-grade level, you must provide a resolution stating that you do not offer. And currently, we do not have career technical-approved coursework at the eighth-grade level. We do at the seventh-grade level with our engineering course, but we do not currently at our eighth-grade level. And so, the board is asked to, in compliance with the requirements from the Ohio Department of Education, provide a resolution stating as such.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Reeves. Can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12.01, Public Comment. We do not have anyone signed up for this public comment period. Moving on to Agenda Item 13.01, Board Comments. Does anyone have comments or thoughts they want to share?
One thought that I'd like to share. Thinking about the summer school report and the superintendent's report this evening, as we look at the groups of students that we were focusing on in that -- in those reports, it is a very strong indicator of the attention that we are paying to all of our students' needs. And it's also a very strong indicator of the way we're looking for new opportunities to provide additional pathways and exciting pathways. That benefits not only the students that we were talking about this evening, but it benefits delivery of instruction across our entire district. Everyone benefits when we create these high-touch opportunities for our students. Dr. Kellogg, I thank you for encouraging your staff to push forward and to look for those opportunities and to make these things come alive. It's important. It's exciting, and it speaks very well for what this community receives from its public education system.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 14.01. The board will meet in regular session at 6:00 PM on Monday, September 24th, in the board training room at the Early Learning Center, and then move into a work session on Monday evening, September 24th at 6:30 PM in the Skybox here at the Early Learning Center. At this time, I am excited to entertain a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Thank you all for joining us this evening.
I had forgotten your names.